Good evening and welcome to the May eleventh, twenty twenty-three regular session of the Milford School Committee meeting. This meeting is being broadcast by Milford TV and copies can be obtained at the request of this board or through central office. Our first agenda item is our approval of minutes and our first set of minutes are from the regular session held on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion or comment? Not seeing any, so looking for a motion to accept the April twenty-seventh regular session minutes. Motion by Robin, second, by John, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Second set of minutes is from the executive session held on April twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three. Any discussion or comments? Not seeing any.
Just like I said, we're going to approve, we voted to approve but not to release these minutes because there's still some protected contact.
Yes, thank you for that. Yeah, so only a vote to approve, not to release. So looking for a motion to approve the minutes of the executive session held on April twenty-seventh. Motion by Matt, second, by Brendan, all in favor. That is unanimous. Excellent, thank you. Next agenda item is announcements, correspondence, and distributions. Anything, any committee members? No, not seeing any. Administration, anything from administration side? Not seeing any, alright, so perfect. Third agenda item is the invitation to speak, assuming, not seeing anybody here, the invitation to speak. Alright, excellent. So, moving on from there, we're going to, uh, next agenda item is the Milford Community Use Program Subcommittee Appointment. I apologize that I didn't do that appointment at our last meeting, um, and just seeing on, on this, I'm gonna do multiple people on this. Mike and John had expressed interest in working with, with, um, community use on that, so I appointed those two. If, I'm happy to put a third person on the committee if anybody would like to be a part of it too, because obviously we can have three without, you know, making a quorum. So, again, if you consider it, let me know on the side, uh, through email, and they can put you on, and we can announce it at the next meeting, but as of right now, both John and Michael will be a part of that subcommittee. So, thank you to the two of them. Good, alright. Any questions or comments on that? Not seeing any? Alright. Next agenda item then is the Milford Community Use Program. We have a board opening. Amy Tumani has resigned from the board, uh, so again, we have that opening there. So the, uh, and it is one of our appointments. The Milford School Committee would like to announce an opening on the Milford Community Use Board. This opportunity is a school committee appointment with a term to be determined. Interested individuals should send an intent of interest and a short bio to myself, Christopher Wilson, um, as I'm the chairman of the school committee, and my email is C W I L S O N, so C Wilson at Milford MA dot com. Um, right now, I'm saying the deadline for the submission of interests should be completed by May twenty-sixth, that's that Friday, um, and that gives us the, that first meeting in June to be able to, uh, have that be a part of the packet, look those, its submissions over and, and come to a vote for that, again, that first meeting in June. That's, sounds like a good plan and schedule for everybody? Alright, any?
Do you want me to send that out, Chris?
Yes, I say, where else are we sharing?
Yes, sorry, yeah, so if you could send that out, uh, school-wide email, that'd be great. If it's sent out tomorrow, then it gives us a, a few weeks for.
Can you share me what you just read?
Yeah, sure, yeah, I can hand this right to you. And I guess, yeah, one other thing, uh, just to note, uh, the Milford Community Use Program is a, uh, community program offering year-round recreational education and cultural activities for children, teens, adults, and elderly. The mission of the Milford School Use Program is to provide a well-balanced program of activities, courses, and programs to meet the very needs and interests of the local residents and allow the town's buildings to be used when school's not in session. So again, we're looking to, uh, fill that vacancy. I'll just hand that right to you. Perfect, great, excellent, good. Then, moving on, we will, uh, review the organizational chart by Dr. McIntyre.
Sure, this is, um, this is just a high-level organizational chart that we've used for grant applications and some other purposes. Um, I don't wanna get into a ton of details, but I'm happy to answer any questions you have. At one point, we had like a thing that folded out that was, I think, very difficult and cumbersome to read, that looked like a spider web. Um, I think this is a pretty straightforward representation of kind of the organizational structure.
Okay, excellent. Anybody have any, uh, questions in regards to this? Um, I think one of the other aspects of it as we're reviewing it is just to take note of, you know, the committee, obviously, we, we oversee the superintendent of schools, um, but we also have, um, to my understanding, right, is the, we, we are part of the hiring process for the Special Education Director, the Director of Nursing, and the Milford Community Use Program Director, if I am correct on that. Um, so I just kinda, I wanted to highlight those three positions, again, just, uh, from my side, sometimes, you know, and, and someone like Brendan, I'll just point to you as someone that's new to our committee, just so you have an understanding too, um, and the hope is to have something like this available to, to, to new members and future members, so they have an understanding of, you know, where the, where the committee falls, what sort of role in, in understanding of what, what roles they also oversee. Um, and I think it also gives us a good kinda sense of the, the various departments that we do have, you know, from the special education to our schools to the music department, athletic department, all the curriculum side of it, the business side of it, the E L program, the Family Resource Center, the I T and Grant side, and the social-emotional learning. So, um, again, that, when you start breaking down all the different departments, um, it just shows that, how much is needed just to run this school system on a day-to-day basis. So again, just wanted to at least bring this to everybody's attention.
Yeah, I, I think this could use, um, just a little revisit on ju- just how it's presented to us, you know, because it's really not clear here that, you know, clearly, Special Ed Director reports to the superintendent, but it's not clear that it's, you know, whose responsibility it is for appointment, and similarly with the, um, Director of Nursing, uh, School Physician, Community Use Director, and then it's not really clear here. I mean, we get it 'cause we were somewhat familiar with it, but, um, you know, that the, the principals are hiring all the in-building personnel and, including coaches, I think, correct me if I'm wrong?
No, that's correct.
And, um, you know, A D, I don't see, I don't know where it is here, I'm not, it's not jumping out at me, but I'm sure it's here somewhere.
Third row, second down, yeah.
That, that's a, uh, is, is that, is, I'm not even sure, is that, at one point, that would have been a principal hire, but now that it's, it's multiple schools, it's probably a superintendent hire.
Yeah, it'd be, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a, that's a great question, because it's, it's Stacy and the high school now, really.
So I think we should just get a little bit more clarity on this, you know, sometime in the future.
Is it shared with us?
It's, it should be in the packet.
Oh, no, I meant on the drive.
Uh, we can do that pretty easily.
Yeah. This is a good outline, I just like a little bit more clarity if, if we, if we can.
Robin?
Yeah, just echoing what John was saying, so when I'm looking at this, there's certain positions that it seems intuitive, would report to the positions above them, but then I look at like Director of Nurse, oh, excuse me, Director of Music, who has Director of Athletics underneath, and, and clearly, they're not reporting to each other, so just, for me, I'm, I'm curious, just being a member of the school committee, understanding who really oversees who, so who do individuals report to, and who is evaluating who, and I, I think that that can be just confusing, and so I think, I don't completely know that as a member of the committee, so I'd appreciate that, so yeah, just echoing what John was saying, but both reporting and then kind of evaluation purposes, I think would be helpful for us to just be aware of.
Thanks for that feedback. Megan?
Sorry, the only other ad I would have, Kevin is reiterating on this in the future, is, and I know the numbers change constantly, but an approximate number of each of the people that are represented by these boxes, because I actually think it'd be interesting, year over year, to kinda show potential growth in the org chart or otherwise, right? And so, understanding, you know, the teacher and the T A number's gonna move quite significantly, but principals or A Ps or something, I think it'd be neat over a five or ten-year span to actually take a look at how that's changing.
Megan, it's like from the overall staff, right?
Just like a number, so teachers' number, A Ps.
Right, like how many teachers add memorial to, to, right?
All together, absolutely, consolidated.
Oh, consolidated, like district-wise?
By buildings, right, Chris, but even if you just showed teachers, I think to have a couple points that we could look at.
Yep.
As we think about potential growth for administration and how that relates to numbers of staff.
Excellent, sounds good, appreciate it. Matt, Mike, looking over towards you, you guys are good. Yes?
Just a point of reference, when you mentioned the school committee's authority to hire, the third position is also the replacement of the business manager is hired under the reform act.
I think that's the fourth one, actually.
Fourth one.
I didn't realize that was.
Our fifth if you count superintendent.
Well, we have, there's, there's a, there's a couple of other obscure ones, there's, not really obscure, it's legal, it's legal counsel.
Legal counsel.
Jerry would appreciate that.
School, school physician, there's, you know, the Bible that I carry, it's in here.
It'd be a, attendance supervisor, maybe somewhere in there too, or.
Liz Delarue.
Yeah, actually, yeah, so it's a good point, John, thank you, like, so the school physician, like where that falls under, um, and I know, like, I guess the school resource officers are just kind of an extension of the police department under our jurisdiction.
They do, and they, they work directly with me and the school principals.
Okay, yeah, so I think, yeah, trying to.
We don't provide, just for the record, we don't provide evaluations for these school resource officers, that's not the police department.
Yeah, that's fine, yeah. Yeah, so it sounds like we may try to expand on the, what you once had as a larger one, um, it sounds like, you know, from what the board is looking for, is a little bit more of that clarity, uh, like I said, from my side, just kinda looking at it from a department-to-department standpoint, too, um, I think would be, be helpful, um, almost from my side, too, as we get reports from the different departments throughout the year, kinda, it's a way of checking off that, okay, yeah, we've, we've heard from, you know, the Social Emotional Learning Department, we've heard from E L Department, oh, but we haven't heard from the Special Education Department, right? So, kinda gives us that, that ability to kinda track all the different departments, uh, and, and get their feedback throughout the year. So again, whoever's, whoever would be sitting in this, this seat in the future, I think it would be helpful for them also. Any other questions, comments? Not seeing any, so excellent, thank you on that, so appreciate it. So, and you're good on updates?
Yep, yep.
Maybe hit it at a, you know, in a couple weeks or so for maybe another update?
Um, yeah, let me, let me look at that, just 'cause this is, this is, this is a incredibly busy time of the year right now.
Fair enough.
You know what, ideally, I think we'd maybe look at it over the summer and then maybe report back in the fall if that works.
Yeah.
For folks, I'm seeing some nodding heads, I'm just, I'm just saying, like, we're heading into like the crazy season right now.
But the end of the school year was easy, right? Alright, so excellent, alright, so moving on from, uh, the org, org chart review, we're gonna go on to, uh, policy review. Hand that over to you, Robin.
Yeah, sure.
Yes, thank you.
So at the last policy meeting, and so it was two weeks ago, I can give us the exact date, uh, let me just look at my calendar quick, so it was April twenty-seventh, yep, the policy subcommittee met and we reviewed a few different policies, um, to bring forward for the full committee's review, including a policy on therapy dogs that Lisa Kincaid was there to present, so I just wanna give her due credit for that. So, the policies that are listed here, file D A, D B C, D I, and file I M H are all first reading, uh, no vote is required. However, there is one policy that we are looking to retire, which is the file D B D A, School Choice, um, as the existing policy is no longer valid when looking at the state law. And so, I apologize, I'm not sure if we can vote on that tonight, or a reading's been done since it's just retiring, but.
I think it's the committee's kinda purview what they wanna do, I think we're very clear on first and second readings for like new poli- or changes to policies or updates, um.
I, I, I think it can be retired tonight if we wanted to, I'm not positive though.
So that policy is in your packet, um, if, and I don't know that there's a need, if people would be more comfortable having it as a first reading tonight, we can vote for retirement at the next meeting, I think that's fine.
And I'm also comfortable with, uh, you voting tonight, just based on, it's just a no-longer-valid policy based on just current practices.
Yeah, it's fine, you can do. Okay, um, any questions, I guess we'll go through them one by one, um, then we'll vote on them one by one.
But we're only voting on the school, the school.
Oh, sorry, yeah, right, yeah, my apologies, yeah, the others are first reads, so, um, so looking for, uh, a motion, um, to retire school policy, D B D A, regarding school choice. So, motion by Megan, second, by Michael, all in favor, and that is, uh, unanimous. Uh, Brendan is not here, so he'll abstain on that one. Um, okay, and then, any, actually, uh, Robin, do you wanna go through the other ones at all as far as the changes to those, um, from a highlight standpoint?
Many of them, we were looking at the M A S C policies, and so for the fiscal management and goals, um, that was pulled directly from there, um, the budget deadlines and schedules, similar, um, the fiscal accounting and reporting, we did have a prior policy, so you'll see in your packet that that is, um, changed to reflect the M A S C policy again, and then the one that is a little bit different, again, because this was the policy that was brought forward, um, from our Social Emotional Learning Director, this was taken from samples from other districts that have therapy comfort dog policies, um, and essentially, there have been individuals in the community who have therapy dogs that, um, have come into the schools, but we wanted to have a policy, what this will look like, so that there is standard language, um, around this, and so, that want, that's basically the rationale for that policy, but again, it is similar to what other districts have done, uh, with therapy dogs, and it's specific to, I just wanna mention, it's specific to therapy dogs, we do have a service dog policy, which is, or service animal policy, which is separate from this.
Great, thank you. Uh, any questions on any of the first reads? No, so, go ahead, Mike.
I have three suggestions, very minor. Um, I would, when you go in the first page, one, two, three, four, five, uh, the request, when you request the superintendent, I would probably put superintendent or designate, so if Kevin wants to delegate that out to somebody, 'cause that would be, um, and then two, training certifications, uh.
Which, which policy we refer to, Michael?
Some therapy dogs, right?
The therapy dog, yeah, 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 but so, um, I would just say superintendent or his designate, their designate. Last one is this, the certification, the animal must be certified by a recognized organization, I would say certified by a nationally-recognized organization. Recognize could be, I mean, that's very vague, it could be something small.
The only small thing, and I, this is my ignorance, I do not know much about the certification of therapy dog handlers or therapy dogs, but, um, I would just wanna double-check with Lisa to make sure, 'cause there might actually be an international organization, right?
Or it could be, or it could be state level, too.
Or state level, right, so.
Coming from, from summer camp, usually, when you do a certification, you say state or national, instead of just recognized, so.
Therapy Dog International might be an international organization, so yeah, so we could, uh, I think we should look into that before we put in a qualifier.
Yeah, great, now, you, Mike, any other questions on the first reads? Alright, not seeing any, that's great, thank you, Rob, appreciate the update on that. So, moving on to, um, a spending policy, and again, this is more continuation, um, two months ago now, um, we had kinda had a, that discussion about, uh, introduction to the spending policy, so it took this time to just kinda, um, continue with that discussion a little bit. Um, I know earlier today, I sent out a, um, kinda like a, an outline that I had found and, and utilized it and implemented, you know, Milford School Committee into it, um, so we have that, and I think, Michael, you had just dropped off some, another piece of paperwork, too, so I guess I'll quickly go through, uh, what I had composed, Mike, I'll send it over to you for kinda some of your input based on it, I guess, and go from there, so, um.
Chris, can we, can we maybe just preface this with?
Oh, go ahead, John, yes, go ahead.
You know, um, and I, I think there was, there was, I think it was the first, it was an unscheduled or emergency, not mer- emergency, but it was an unscheduled meeting in early April, I think five of us were, were there, April second, I think, but, um, the considerations for creating a spending policy is that, you know, general law, chapter seventy-one allows the superintendent to offer compensation to employees in accordance with our district policy. Uh, we don't have a district spending policy, so that's where the questions, you know, were, were vetted out, we, we didn't really come to any conclusions, but the, the questions and considerations were raised, such as, you know, which position should have an individual employment contract versus keeping employees at-will, um, the, other considerations such as the length of the contract, uh, such as the, you know, dollar amount that the superintendent is allowed to offer, um, either by, by rights, so to speak, or should we put some restrictions at not over a certain amount with our school committee approval, length of contracts, um, you know, should we, you know, do we wanna have any insight and control over those, or do we wanna limit them to, you know, a, a suggestion was, and it's just one, you know, up to three years is fine, over three years, need school committee approval, and these are the things that I personally, you know, I, I was definitely one of the drivers of having this conversation and developing this policy, and, um, I think we have, I think it's, when we come up with a complete policy, it's gonna take, I think it's gonna take a few months to get there, and, um, but with that said, I guess, that's probably all I need to say now, you know, leading to this next part, which is, I'm, I guess I'm not really sure what these are, if this is a proposed policy for tonight, or a temporary, or an interim, or, or whatever you guys present.
Yeah, um, yeah, basically, I was, I, I found a, a policy online that kinda, uh, outlined what, what I felt we were looking for, based on some of the notes, um, from that April meeting, so again, this was just more of an outline, I wanted to get it into everybody's hands, just to kinda review it, I know, I apologize for not getting into you guys sooner, but certainly, again, this is more of a, a preliminary read more than anything, uh, and I wasn't expecting any type of, of vote, or, at this point, tonight, um, we do have a meeting in a couple weeks that if we feel we wanna start pushing, um, pushing that policy in, and we have some working time to get it developed, then yes, that'd be, that would be great, um, 'cause we do have a, we have a couple meetings back-to-back coming up, so, which is good. Um, so with that, yeah, this, this policy, which was called a, uh, review of employment contracts, um, again, the, I'll just read through what I have down, so, "The Milford School Committee, although recognized that the Education Reform Act of nineteen ninety-three en masse general law, chapter seventy-one, has placed the authority and responsibility for personal matters largely in the hands of the superintendent of schools, feels that it can and should perform a valuable role in terms of public oversight. This can be done without intruding on the responsibilities and authority of the superintendent. Therefore, the Milford School Committee adopts this policy that it must be provided with a copy for its review of the final employment contract between any managerial and administrative or supervisory employee in the Milford Publics, in the Milford Public, I should say, in the Milford Public Schools, I should say, um, and, uh, when such contract is negotiated and agreed upon by the superintendent. The copy should be provided to the school committee prior to the date when the contract is to be executed." Uh, so that, and then I added just these two lines, just more of a, a, a point of kinda bullet points that all contracts should not exceed three years unless voted and approved by the school committee, and that was, again, just based on notes from the April meeting, and, uh, and this number I just kinda arbitrarily threw out there just as a placeholder, "All contracts shall not exceed a four percent increase in compensation unless voted and approved by the school committee," and again, that number was very arbitrary, um, in there, so, so that part of, that's what, what I had, um, I know, again, Mike, you had some, you had just passed out some notes from your side of it, so I'll hand it over to you for, for your notes and what you'd like to say?
Sure, I, um, it's funny, I, I took some notes last week about this, and then when you set this framework, I just add them into this, so, um, alls I did was just tweak the two lines you put, and then, add a paragraph, 'cause I know we talked about, um, some ideas that floated to say, hey, the school committee should authorize only certain positions to be contracted, so basically, we'll say, you know, to the superintendent, hey, you know, here's the three positions that you can execute a contract up to three years without our approval, principals, assistant prin- whatever it is, um, and then anything outside of that list would have to come to school committee for approval, so that last paragraph is, that's what is, you're talking about that, so, um, yeah, that was the intent of, of flow the idea of making the list go through, of, you know, I mean, making it narrow, so that's, that's what that is.
So, so on this part, Mike, um, the assistant superintendent, I think, is, is already governed by the, by the statute, right? It's, it's.
By the way, the list, I just, these are placeholders, I, they're just complete placeholders, or just, I have no idea what the list is, that's up to the committee.
Okay, that, that's perfect, because, you know.
And this whole thing should be reviewed by Jerry, so this is just, we're just.
Okay, yeah, that, that makes sense, because principals and assistant superintendents are the, the only two we actually do have policies for, or, or statutes that govern, so.
They're just placeholders, we might add five more.
Okay, that makes sense.
Excellent, Matt?
Um, the only thing off the top, he, hearing this, reading this, is that I think that it's probably important that we make it overly clear, that there's some sort of differentiation between this policy and bargaining units.
Okay.
Just to make it obvious that they don't fall under what's going on here, because those are separate discussions, and I think especially if terms or increases kinda get clouded there, we don't want that to happen, so. I think that's it for now.
Mm-hmm. After that, and, uh, Megan?
So I guess when I saw spending policy, Chris, on the agenda, I was expecting something different, so I guess my first ask is, to the extent we're gonna discuss this again, I think it needs a new name, because I think this is actually quite specific, and our, our spending is governed under a, a sort of warrant policy, and so I don't wanna cause confusion with that, and then my second ask would be, as we continue this discussion, we currently have a policy, G C B B, around employment of principals, and so I wanna ensure that wherever we're setting up, it's aligned with kind of what is currently in place.
Yes.
Thanks.
I agree with that, I have this policy, but I, I probably coined the word spending, and the reason I, it was spending is supposed to contract it, because we have some at-will employees, and then there's the discussion of do we want fewer contract employees and more at-will employees, and do we want to change the current status or change it upon attrition, so.
So maybe status for employee classification or something, John, to me, this just was something different than this, so I just wanna make sure we're not.
Yeah, I just wanted to encompass it, so if, if we, you know, we weren't just talking about contracts, so if, if we started talking about at-will employees tonight, we're not deviating too far from the posted agenda items, so it, you know, it can certainly use improvement on the phrasing.
Megan, what was that code for the principal?
Uh, if only I could see that, it's G C B B, employment of principals?
Alright, thanks. I love the codes, they make so much sense.
Yeah, and I think based on that one, that right, that one's well-defined.
And Matt, I have a copy if you want to look at it.
And I think, yeah, to be able to utilize that as a, as, yeah, as kind of a, more of an outline, right, of what we're looking for overall, so, yes, definitely.
And just for the record, we also have a G C B A, which, um, also governs the compensation of principals, compensations, salary schedules of principals, I guess is what you call it.
Robin?
So I know a lot of this language is just a placeholder, but one question I have is about the compensation, the four percent, so I know it says that all contracts shall not exceed a four percent increase in compensation, but if it's a new hire, there's not initial amount to be basing that on, so I don't know if we also want to list anything for an initial hire, um, what, I don't know what that would look like, but it's.
So I, I did, Chris, you didn't share it, did you? The, um, I made a brief outline of what we discussed on that April second, I think it was April second meeting, I know there was only five of us here, and I don't remember who, but I, I can share, like, the thoughts that came out, should, should we give a, a percentage not to increase, uh, not to exceed, or should we do that annually, because it could be a really tight year, and we might have a one percent, and this year might be a five percent, and, and different considerations, or should it be three percent and without school, it, it can be, it could be more, there's, there's leeway, because the policy, I think, should read something like not to exceed whatever we decide, without school committee approval, so there's never, you're never locked into something if you're trying to retain or attract a good employee, um, I didn't really tighten it up enough to, that I thought I could send it out, because I, I, it's like eighty percent complete in my thoughts from that, from that night in my notes, but maybe I can share that?
Yes, yeah.
After tonight sometime, and, and these are all just considerations, it's whatever we, we want to get to.
Brendan?
Yeah, um, I, I like what we're trying to do with this, uh, my only guess question or comment would be, um, does this hurt our ability to be competitive when we're trying to find talent at the administrative level, which we know is becoming more difficult? Uh, there's fewer people who are enrolling in programs, there's fewer people who wanna go into the profession of, of administrator in those schools, does this delay that process of potentially hiring the candidate that we want? Is my general question, comment, concern, does that have to be answered tonight?
Hmm, okay, thank you.
Yeah, I, I think it, I think it could, but. Yeah, I, I think it, I think it could, but by the same token, does it, does it, uh, if, if we don't put any kind of governance on it, does it, does it take away from the goals we're trying to accomplish overall? So that's, that's the balance we're trying to find, and I'm trying to get to a policy that doesn't limit us specifically, but it might put some checks and balances on what's, what's going on. That, that's just my, my goal.
Agreed.
Michael?
Yeah, to, to run this point, I actually put the word annual, four percent annual increase would, which would make sense. Uh, and to your, to your point, I, I think, um, we don't wanna handcuff our superintendent. Um, but I think we need to think of the future where if it's not somebody as honest as Kevin, and all of a sudden gives an employee a ten percent increase without us knowing, um, it's, it's too late, cause it's, it's contract, cause he has binding authority, right? And so we want some, I think, boundaries. But also make it clear that, to say, hey, hey, superintendent, you have the authorization to do this. Um, and if you wanna do a, a new position that has a contract, just come to us and talk, talk about it before it's posted, right? Kinda thing, so I, I hundred percent agree, we don't wanna handcuff anybody, but we also wanna make sure there's some fiscal control.
And, and some of the other points that, that were made that night were, it could be no contract to exceed fifty thousand, seventy-five, a hundred, a hundred and twenty-five, without school committee approval. So, once you get into that range, if you, if you put the, just, let's just say, one twenty-five barrier, there's very few new hires that are gonna be over that, and I think a hire over that would, would probably warrant some, some checks and balances of the school committee. So I'm trying to, I wanna create something that offers guidance to everybody, and what we come up with, I, you know, I don't have, I don't have absolutes that I wanna nail down, but I want, but I want to nail down
Want a framework.
Some absolutes with, you know, this committee.
Okay, thank you, John.
Excellent. Any other questions, comments?
Can we share the document out? Uh, I, I guess you did, on, on Google Drive?
Yes, yeah.
I put some notes in it, so.
Um, what I shared out was Google, I know I put one up on Google Drive, um, but I think I shared it all via PDF, so, yeah. So we'll put it on, put it on Google Drive, um, and then people can put notes to it, and, and then we can kinda consolidate everything together. Um, and go from there, so, that sounds good. Any other questions on that? I kept a few notes, and like I said, it's, I think that it's a, it's a good working document. I think that just continually to talk about it, um, we keep, you know, kinda coming up with ideas, and, and we're, we're honing in on a, on a policy here, so. Um, and I know, like, John, from your side, if we want to continue that, uh, well, we will continue that discussion, I should say, in, in regards to contract versus at-will. Um, and I think, you know, part of that, looking at, you know, we can also utilize the org chart that we got, right? And, and starting to utilize that, right?
And at that, at that meeting a month or so ago, we did have a list of, um, all non-union employees, right? Some were contract and, and some were. And that's, and that's easy to provide at any point. Yeah, and it's, it's, you know, we had some advice from town council that, or from labor council rather, that, you know, i- it, it's probably more beneficial to have fewer contract employees, more at-will. I won't get into the justification, cause I don't, you know, I, I don't wanna speak for him, but he, that was our advice. So, I, I think it's, I think those, we probably wanna consider a lot of these positions and, and decide, do they wanna, you wanna, do we want them to remain contract, or, or, um, do we wanna shift them to at-will and, and how? Whether it's upon, you know, their, you know, replacement, or, or upon their renewal, or not at all, so. I just think, I don't think it's gotten enough attention, I think we need to take a closer look, and, um, and just sort it, sort out what we want to accomplish.
Okay, excellent. Sounds good. Any other questions or comments in regards to this policy kinda development? Not seeing any, alright, excellent, sounds good. Alright, moving on then, from there, to, uh, a report from our superintendent on the kindergarten registration update.
This is actually a, a very quick report. Uh, we have three hundred and twenty-six total students, um, registered at this point. A hundred and seventy-eight for Brookside and a hundred and forty-eight for Memorial. Obviously, we're watching that number, um, and, and like we talked about with the finance committee and at these meetings previously. If we start to look like we're trending upward towards the three sixties, then we'll really consider, um, adding a position. I've asked our principals of Brookside and Memorial, Lisa Burns and Vicki Houston, to kinda have two plans for rooms. One, you know, if we have the current staffing that we're planning for based on the, um, if the budget's approved at the town meeting. And then two, if the budget's approved in town meeting, plus one kindergarten teacher. And so they're, you know, putting some scenarios together to kinda reflect both of those, both of those situations.
Three twenty-one?
Three twenty-six.
Three twenty-six, thank you.
Yep.
The magic number's still three sixty, kinda.
I think if we're heading in that direction, then we'll really look at.
Yeah.
Silly question, Kevin, it wouldn't, the new room wouldn't automatically go to Brookside, whether there will be additional space?
I, I think it's, it's probably ninety percent Brookside.
Just curious, okay.
But I just wanted to leave that option open. I think our ability to put a classroom in Memorial is very limited, but I don't wanna box myself in just in case.
Creativity, yeah.
Cause we've got a couple of things that we could play around with.
Okay, thanks.
But duly noted.
Other questions on the registration? Um, in comparison to from our last meeting, has that number, has it started, are we seeing an update?
It's, it's creeping up, but I wouldn't say it's like jumping, like to a point where I'm like, oh my gosh, we really jumped. Uh, it's probably in the last month or so, if, if you wanna move on and give you that number.
Okay.
Um, like, I think it's about fifteen, though, give or take.
Okay, yeah, I just, you know, in comparison to years past, right? We saw this initial uptick that kinda got our conversation going. And are we still on that upward trajectory, or did we flatten off? So I guess that's why, that's the kind of the numbers I'm looking for, um, and just the trends, just to look at. You know, where, you know, how, how quickly are we approaching that, that magic, kinda like you're just saying, that, that three sixty number? Are we, every month are we, you know, adding only five students, or have we added fifteen students? You know, so I'm just trying to get a sense of, of, of how, how, how much urgency will it be in regards to posting for that kindergarten teacher?
Well, the good news is, is we have postings for kindergarten teachers, so we can kinda throw those up quickly. Um, I would say, you know, it's, we've had a weird six years in terms of enrollment. Probably one of the weirdest in the history of the Milford Public Schools. Um, this past year, our enrollment was incredibly stable. I think we started, and I don't have the numbers right in front of me, but we were, we're six off of, or six or seven students off of where we started. Um, and it was either the August number or the September number, I can't remember which one. So, but it, but it's, it's been, although there's been a lot of in and out, the number's been very stable, um, overall, which has not been the case the previous five years. Um, so it's hard to say, like, if, we, we could get a ton of kids right before kindergarten starts, which happens, cause when we start putting out, like, hey, um, you know, you start having the orientations and the, the visits to the school, that suddenly makes people think, oh, maybe school's starting and my child is five or six years old, and maybe, you know, it's time to bring him in. So sometimes we see that, sometimes we see a big push, like, right after school starts, similar kinda thing. Oh gosh, the buses are rolling, let's, you know. So it's, 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 that's been a little erratic too, in terms of where we've gotten the numbers. So, again, we're, I'm, I'm talking to Anna Cahill, Lisa Byer, and the two principals, just about every week, to kinda see where we're at, because it is something that, it's historically high this early. Now, I'd like to think we're just getting really, really good at registering people. That's just unclear for me to say that definitively.
I can just add the numbers, um, quickly, we're at three ten as of March thirty-first. We're pretty much on pace for the April through June window, um, for two of the last three years. It was forty in that window last year, and it was thirty-two in the twenty, twenty-one year, so. Was sixteen, we're pretty close to on pace with those two years, so.
Yeah, as far as additions, so our.
As far as additions in the April through June window.
Yeah, I mean, our starting point was a little higher, but the additional numbers are on that.
Starting point is much higher than those years, yeah.
Yeah.
So if I were predicting, I would say we're probably adding a kindergarten teacher, but I, like, I hate to predict with enrollment at this point, because it's been so, it's been so kind of erratic the last, like, half decade.
Thank you, Matt, on that. Any other questions in regards to the kindergarten registration? Thank you for that update, appreciate it. Alright, uh, next, a report from the Assistant Superintendent for Curriculum Instruction and Assessment.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Um, I'd like to give you just a, a broad overview of some of the changes we're making to the instructional core in grade five. Historically, grade five has been broken into three teams of five teachers, five teachers teaching, um, unique subjects. And it's limiting, because, um, when you do it that way, our classes, we're in fifteen sections, right? So the class is divided into fifteen sections. And then the, the amount of time that they have in their core periods is about forty-three minutes. That's without transitions. So when we transition fifth grade kids from one, one classroom to the next, um, you know, you're probably talking on a good day, forty-minute periods, maybe, but probably more likely thirty-eight minutes. So for core instruction purposes, we, we, as an example, we're going with, um, Illustria Math, which is a sixty-minute, um, it needs a sixty-minute block. Even on a good day, if we're at forty minutes, we're not getting through everything we need to get through in math. Um, and it's become pretty obvious as the year has gone, um, progressed, that even, even though Illustria Math doesn't have a hundred and eighty lessons per se, it, I think it's around a hundred and twenty, I think, grade five, the forty minutes just doesn't work, and that's just math I'm talking about. Um, I also think for fifth grade kids, trying to manage five different teachers, um, gets a little hard for some kids. That, um, I'm trying to manage five different teachers with five different assignments, potentially at home, um, it's a lot. So, we've broken it into four different sections, uh, for the current year, so we'll have, um, four teams of four teachers. Uh, we were able to do it because we had a retirement, uh, of a math specialist, and we took the math specialist and made them a math. And the new hire is gonna be a math teacher in grade five. Um, so what that does is it gives us sixty-minute blocks and less transitions. So, the four periods will be a math block for sixty minutes, a science block for sixty minutes, or an increase of fifteen minutes in, in science. We have a sixty-minute reading block, and then a sixty-minute humanities block. Humanities will take into account the, um, writing course and social studies into one. And if you look at social studies standards, the social studies standards are very heavily, um, they're very heavy in writing. So they cover a lot of the writing standards. The reading teachers are going to need to, to pick up some of the reading sta, uh, writing standards as well, but they have additional time in their schedule to do it. Um, I think that this, this gives us better balance in terms of humanities versus math-science. Um, it's about two hours of math and science, two hours of reading, writing, uh, social studies. Um, I think that, uh, what it also does is it, it reduces class sizes, because we're going into sixteen sections instead of fifteen sections. Um, and then also, it helps us with, um, with specials, cause it's easy to break up four groups of, um, the math works better. Uh, we're, we're putting them into ten different specials, um, so it's all even numbers, uh, and it, when we, when we did the schedule, um, specials worked out great, um, and then Tim was still able to, um, have recesses where he wanted, so, uh, I think the one downside is this, this humanities course, where the teachers are gonna have to basically kinda co-create this new, this new class. Um, we're giving them some time in the spring here to do that, we're gonna give them time in the, the summer to do it. We're looking at some grants to help them with, um, programming, uh, so, um, I think, I think this is a, I definitely think this is a better model for kids, and I think that we're, um, putting the pieces together to support our teachers, to make sure it's gonna be successful all the way through. Um, when Tim comes to present his school improvement plan, I think in a couple of weeks, he's gonna have a little more detail on this, um, he has shared this with teachers. I, I do believe teachers know their team assignments right now, um, so, I think the next step is, is letting, letting you folks know, letting parents know, um, so that's in the public and everybody's clear about, uh, what to expect for next year. I don't know if you have any questions that I can, I might be able to answer them, I might have to go back to Tim to get some, uh, answers.
Any questions?
I have a couple of quick questions.
Sure.
Um, and you might not know this right now, but at Willen right now, teaching in grade five, typically, do the teachers have elementary one through six licenses, or like the fifth grade, would they have a subject area five through eight?
Both.
So if I'm.
Some have both, some, some have just content.
So if I'm a content teacher, and I have a content five through a, through a, what content area would you anticipate would be teaching this humanity, humanities class?
Say it again?
Like, so if I'm a five through a English teacher, or his, could either history or social studies?
Yeah, so we have, we have right now two, two teachers that have the right, the ELA cert, and two teachers that have the social studies cert, slotted for those positions.
Okay, so they can teach, either one could teach that.
Yeah.
And then my second question is, how will this impact kids who have, um, pull-out, like, pull-up math, pull-up ELA that's currently written for, say, forty-three minutes? Is their I E P gonna change, and now?
So, yes, but, y- yes, um, I think you know this, the way that we do it is by class period, right? So, if you're being pulled out for the forty-three minutes, you're being pulled out for the sixty minutes now.
The only reason I bring it up is because, depending on the student, and they're, and obviously this is a thing for special education, but, um, we now could be changing the placement of kids, where they had enough minutes before they were considered full inclusion, now they're not. So now we're, for a small group of kids, that might be considered a substantial change, so it's just something to be aware of.
Yeah, um, I think it's important to note that we did, uh, when we were creating this, we were working with, um, Lisa Soto and, and Jen Norgany and, um, Kerry, um, Carol. So we had everybody in the room, we talked about those very things, so.
And for folks at home, that's the EL Director, Special Education Director, Director of Mathematics, and Director of E L A and lit, re, reading?
Literacy.
Literacy, Director of Literacy, I'm sorry, thank you.
Thank you.
I'd like to understand the curriculum a little bit more, Craig, but I appreciate this was just introductions. I'm gonna wait till Tim gives his spiel before I ask any questions around that. I guess, is this a model that's used elsewhere, that we've noted to be effective, just curious?
Um, well, honestly, in a lot of places, the fifth grade is run like our third grades run.
Got it.
Whereas, like, you're in one class.
Got it, okay, thanks. And then you sort of explained where the additional math teacher will come from? Is a teacher moving now to content to teach science, to fill that fourth spot?
Um, we had, let's see, we had, we had a retirement, I can't remember how that would work. We had a retirement somewhere, and we have three open science positions now.
So we're reg, reg, okay, that makes sense.
Yeah, it's reconfigured, I can't remember where all the spots come from, but,
Okay.
Um, the only real shift was that math specialist that came over.
Okay, and then do we envision that there'll be P D or other needed to kinda support this co-creation and content development over the next?
Yeah, yep, so, like I said, we're doing some of that in the spring, but we're, in the summer, um, there's some grants that we're looking at in potentially buying a program, but, um, actually, I shouldn't say that, we're looking at some open source programs right now.
Okay, and is the way to think about it, you would essentially take kind of the curriculum standards and just divide them?
Yeah, yeah, and, and like I said, a lot of the social studies standards have the writing right embedded in it.
Mm-hmm. Mm-hmm.
So, um, it's a little complicated, uh, but I think, I think some of the other, like I said, some of the other writing pieces have to be picked up by the reading teachers, and they're, they're aware of it too, so they're, they need to take that fifteen or twenty minutes that they've gained and,
Yeah.
embed some of that writing.
I appreciate you sharing, and I appreciate introducing it so early, cause change can be difficult, so it's helpful to kinda hear what's on the forecast, so thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions? Thank you very much for the update, appreciate it. And again, Tim will go into more detail on his, his school improvement side, okay? Excellent, great, thank you. Alright, then, moving on from, uh, the report by our Assistant Superintendent for Business and Human Resources.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have for the committees approved of this evening, four warrants in the amount of eight hundred twenty thousand, two hundred eleven dollars and sixty-seven cents.
Looking for a motion to approve the warrant? Motion by Megan, second, by Michael, all in favor, and that is unanimous.
We also have a request for course reimbursement in the amount of fourteen thousand, eight hundred and two dollars.
Looking for a motion to accept the cour, course reimbursement? Motion by Megan, second by Brendan, all in favor, that is.
I have stayed.
Uh, so, uh, six in favor and one abstention from Matt. Thank you, Matt.
Thank you.
Good catch. We also have a list of the, uh, latest personnel. Good catch. We also have a list of the, uh, latest personnel, um, hires from our previous meeting. No vote is required. I am going to, as I look at Brookside, um, school modular, I'm gonna request we table that to the next meeting as I don't have. Any new information. So in the next couple weeks, I'll reach out to Aries, uh, via Brian Turner and find out an update for us.
Okay, excellent. Quickly, do you feel, um, any meeting from the, uh, s-, you know, the, um, building subcommittee at all would be beneficial? To it, or are we still in the general phase that we can do updates?
We're still in the general phase, maybe early June, if, uh, need be, we'll, we'll reach out and have a meeting.
Okay, okay, great.
Chris, can I ask a question? Sorry, Kathy, you flew through the personnel update. I just wanted to clarify.
Of course.
Oh, sure.
The first one listed there is an admin assistant, an MHS. That's not a new position. That's a replacement, correct?
That's a replacement.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure we didn't add something that wasn't, thanks. Thank you.
Yeah, no problem.
Uh, the turf and track update, the bids are due next week, I believe on May eighteenth, well, May seventeenth.
You're talking labor bids, correct?
I'm sorry?
Le-, bids for labor?
Yes.
Alright.
Um. We had a few questions on the existing bid and we, um, we sent that information via Melissa Bullock today. Who did a wonderful job managing all of those crazy, uh, addendas and, uh, so the bid is solidified. And all applicants have the same information so that the bid, um, is, uh, intact. The softball field lighting update is that we pulled back our IFB on the, um, through the bid process due to the fact that. There is a vendor that is on the, um, state bid list, um, available for equipment purchase. And from there, we'll have to get quotes for labor, which makes the process a little easier and I think more timely, uh, in retrospect with the. The turf and the trap, track project. So I think that was the better way to go. So that's, um, in process as well. And finally, we have the acceptance of the, this.
Yeah, and quickly, are we still, from the turf and track update, are we still on a timeline to, to not, hopefully not affect our, our fall sport seasons barring that? These bids come through. I know that we have the materials and it's just right now we're trying to secure the.
The materials are ordered. Um, I do not believe we have received all of the materials as of yet, but we were fortunate that we placed it early April.
Yeah. Mm-hmm.
So, um, we were as quick as we could get an IPO out after the approval of the article, so, um. I think we're gonna be timely, um, Chris, because we have the, uh, bids coming in next week. The following meeting will do the award at the late, uh, May meeting with school committee, and then we'll have the project starting in June.
Okay, excellent. And then the softball field line, I don't know if I've ever asked, asked what the timeframe for that would be.
We wanna coordinate that when we have the turf and track project going, so that we have the availability of getting that, uh, wiring through.
Right. Right.
Over to the softball field.
Okay, so it is still, thought is to do one large-scale construction project with both?
That is the goal.
Yeah, that's still the goal. Okay, good to know. Excellent. Any other? Brendan, go ahead. I'll give you the first.
Are we still on budget for everything as, as of now?
We will know that next Tuesday.
Okay. Uh, what's the backup plan?
Uh, well, we'll have to talk about that when we see the bids. I, I, I believe our article is going to come in perfectly, um. Within reason and scope of what we've asked for, so we should be fine.
Okay. Thank you.
Megan?
That would require me to remember my question. My question, Kathy, was, people have to put in requests to use the fields. Do we sort of shut those down? So if something comes in for June or July, like, I know there's normally a softball tournament, like, we wouldn't approve that, cause there's not gonna potentially be a field to use, so those.
That is correct. And we've done some notification up to the parents.
Got it, okay. You've done a great job. I think I've seen a lot and I've heard people asking, so I do feel like it's out there, which I think is really helpful.
Well, I'll keep reminding too, just because, cause it looks like, um, we, we might even start the turf and track project or start some pre-work right after graduation potentially.
To think to have it be a surprise is.
So I'm gonna update that, because right now we're thinking the last day of school, so that's something else that, just to look at.
Yeah, that's accurate. Wow, cool. Awesome, thank you.
Excellent.
Thanks, Chris.
Any other questions on that part of it? Um, yeah, again, yeah, thank you for sending out those emails on that update. I think, yeah, when, maybe the only other thing is maybe a sign out there saying that. You know, this, this facility is due to close, uh, such and such a date, just for any, any community members that utilize the facility, summertime for exercise and things of the like that. So that might have some type of, some value there. But they'll, they'll, they'll know quite well when the, when the gates are closed and the doors are locked, but, um, we'll go from there.
Yeah, we can, we can talk about that.
Chris, can I ask one more question?
Yes.
Kevin, is the plan that community use, for like the one-off camps would use Woodland and the main camp would just sort of disperse amongst the backfield?
Well, they really don't use, I mean, they use the fields a little bit, like the, the turf field a little bit, but they more use like.
Mm-hmm.
The, the high school complex.
Okay.
You know, like the courtyard.
And the way construction's going, that wouldn't be impacted at all.
And the gym. Yeah, I think we're gonna be okay. I know they do like, they'll do like an Olympics event out there, things like that, which would, they'd have to adjust how they did that, but.
Okay. Just, I envision it'll be a lot of people, you know, with obviously a large number of children that are.
Yeah, I think we'll be okay, cause we've got tons of parking and, and the activity in the summer is a lot less.
Okay.
The other issue is because of the Brookside project, we have all of our summer programs at Woodland this summer.
Right. Okay.
Which, which Tim is thrilled about. That's, uh, Tim Kieran, Principal of Woodland Elementary School, uh, for those watching at home. So, so that's, that's another adjustment we've had to make, because we have, we've had to put, we've had some programs at, at Brookside and some at Woodland. We've pretty much put everything at Woodland this summer.
Yeah. Okay. Okay, thanks. Thanks, Chris.
Yeah, no problem. Questions? Okay, excellent. So, moving on to gifts then. So, and thank you for the updates. Um, so again, we have a few gifts tonight. Um, the first is, the donor, uh, is Jason and Renee DeVore. Uh, the name of the gift is Do Kind, and the purpose is for the woodland snack, woodland school snacks, and that is in the amount of a hundred and fifty dollars. So thank you to the DeVore family for that. Much appreciated. Uh, the second gift from the Milford Dance Center, again, Do Kind, and for the Woodland School Snacks Program. Also in the amount of one hundred and fifty dollars, so thank you to the Milford Dance Center for that gift. The next is from, uh, Daniel and Kayla Smith. Uh, this gift is for the Family and Community Network. Uh, its purpose is for programs, events, and playgroups in the amount of twenty dollars, so thank you to the Smith family. The next one is from Brian Garrigan and Lauren Wolf, and again, for the Milford Community Network. And for programs, events, and playgroups in the amount of twenty-five dollars, so thank you to Mr. Garrigan and Ms. Wolf. So looking for a motion to accept these gifts. Motion by Robin, second by Michael, all in favor, and that is unanimous. Excellent. So again, thank you for everybody for their generous gifts. Alright, moving on, subcommittee updates. And the subcommittees we met in the last couple weeks. Not seeing any, so.
Other questions?
Go ahead.
Do I reach out to Milford TV or do they reach out to me, or do you?
Um, we'll connect you up, make sure that happens.
I, I can have Melissa Bullock, who might be in the room, set up an introduction.
Okay.
No problem there. Uh, so moving on to future agenda items. Uh, just first, our next meetings, two meetings, the one on, um. Uh, May twenty-fifth and then the next one on June first. Uh, May twenty-fifth is the Dick Corbin Award Night. And the June first is Senior Night. I'd wanna just put that out there in case anybody has conflicts. Um, obviously, we've got a lot of important stuff with, going on with the school improvement plans, um, and, and handbooks coming along. Um, I guess if there's some conflicts, maybe we can try to maneuver some timeframes, cause I know it's, it's important. Those are two very important events for, for, um, for the seniors, um, so again, um, let's see if we can, I'm looking over and Meg is saying that you're potentially.
Unfortunately, traveling on the twenty-fifth, which is unrelated to the events that I would like to be attending, um, but I will miss that meeting regardless, Chris, so, yeah.
Okay. 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 Yeah, I was wondering sure if, yeah, if anybody else had any, any type of conflicts.
I might have to bring Shay along with me to school committee.
That's fine. No problem. She might make you here on time.
Wow.
Bad filter, I'm like, so.
Great delivery, by the way.
Perfect. Any other future agenda items that people would like to see, uh, over our next few meetings? Yes, Brendan?
I think related to the email that we received, uh, I don't remember the tracked it time, it was either earlier this week or last week, wasn't related to the auditorium at the high school.
Yes.
Um, I'd just like to have a discussion about that. What improvements can be made now without affecting, you know, the large renovation that we might be doing in the future? If there's anything that we can address now that makes the place a little bit nicer, that would be appropriate.
One, one thing I could recor-, would recommend on that one is maybe wait till, we could hold that till we have the new facilities director on board and then they have a little time to do like a quick assessment.
That makes like perfect sense to me, yeah.
Cause that would probably be a good, it'd probably be a good conversation for that, for that person, because I think they're gonna look at. The high school is like this kind of, uh, influx is the wrong word, but, um, we took a very different approach to Woodland than we were, we did our other schools with Woodland, you know. School is coming online. I think we've gotta look at, you know, what do we do with the high school over the next few years?
Sure. Right. Totally agree. That's a good suggestion. Thank you, Kevin.
Yeah.
Well, I mean, the only thing I would add is, we could, we could maybe get some input from, from the principal of the high school. I mean, he, he's in charge of the building. Even if it's just in the, in the form of a memo or something, not necessarily an agenda item, but I'd like to hear, I'd like to hear something on that topic before we get a facilities director in place. So I mean, that's not necessarily an agenda item, but.
Almost any agenda item.
I could, I could have Josh write a response to that.
Well, I, I, I think we need some, I think we need some, some kind of, um.
Yeah.
Response from, from somebody within the district.
Okay, yeah, I agree. Other future agenda items? Alright, not seeing any, so, alright. Thank you, Brendan. Alright, that moves us on to adjournment then. At this time, we will be ending the open session of our meeting and entering executive session where we will discuss administrative contract negotiations. And also consider and discuss allegations possibly resulting in the disciplinary action against a school employee. We will not be returning to open session, and this does require a roll call vote. Start over with Matt. Yes. Michael?
Yes.
John?
Yes.
Megan?
Yes.
Robin?
Yes.
Brendan?
Yes.
And I am also a yes. Thank you and have a good night, everyone.